You ready, Dan? I'd like to call the word, the continuation of the recess retreat. It's nine oh eight. Our agenda, we need to get the agenda and see if there any changes we need to make from where we left off last week. Note that one topic's been added under capital improvements, I have the number six, that I'll be addressing. Any changes to the agenda, what we have? Is that okay? So, do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's get down in our agenda until the mayor's able to join us to... Well, I'm not sure if we should do the budget or if we should start with the Shoreline Protection Officer job description since that's something that we could maybe look through and talk about before she gets here. I don't know how familiar she is with budget updates and ahead of order. Let's wait on... Let's go to the Shoreline Protection Officer. You all have a job description for that, and I think, Lord, that you included all of the revisions that the board gave you in the version that you put in the packet, that correction.
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Packet, is it in? I didn't see it listed.
It was in the final packet.
Oh, so last week?
Last week.
That's why I was... What date was that? We've had multiple packets for this. Looks like Thursday, which was what day? It's... The fourth. Were they for the board meeting?
I'm going to resend the packet.
If Dave puts in his horizontal things, then it shows up on my iPad. Because when I get to your stuff, it goes outside. My bad eyes.
It's in the retreat packet, it's the...
What date was the retreat packet sent? Still a question. I can find it if you tell her the date.
I've got it marked.
Are you sending it again?
No, it's here, I am reattending to the meeting tonight, so...
It should be at the top of your inbox now. It has links, so if you go to the agenda, it'll link for you.
This is the red line.
We have the red line, yeah. The red lines were the additions. Crossouts were the originals.
Mike, were those your red lines or were they everybody's red line? The comments, I'm not disputing.
Some on the line.
They were...
Some on the line, I know.
No, I just didn't know, a lot of times it was on the side, Joe Smith did it. Okay, it's only right if everyone...
Does everybody have a description out?
Can I ask a question? Funding for this, does it have to come out of general revenues or this is a... Something to do with the shoreline? In other words, if we're calling it Shoreline Protection Manager, could this come out of...
This is out of fund carry, the beach fund.
Okay, that's my question.
The original intent, or I guess what we were thinking was that we would try to get shared participation or the salaries from Surf City and from Topsail Beach because they were federal advisors to the Shoreline Protection Committee. I did receive an email from Kyle just a day or two ago that Surf City would not be in a position to help us with that this year. Which is a budget issue.
Like everybody else?
It all really has a lot to do with the federal program.
Well, not just that, but they gotta be crushed out with revenues coming from this.
But you know, one of the things that, as we walked through this, that concerned me about doing it as a shared responsibility was, I can see us meeting, we have specific, unique situations here with the inlet, with Cobra, with Phase Five. I can see whoever it is that we get doing this, spending more of their time, and I would hope, spending more of their time working on our issues than perhaps Surf City and certainly Topsail Beach. You know, from my estimation here, having been there a while, please chime in anybody else, but it seems that Topsail Beach has their path ahead pretty well under control. They know what they've got to do and they've got a plan, okay? Surf City's plan is the federal project, so check their block, they've got a plan. And the ones who need a plan and who have a lot of priorities and a lot of issues and challenges is North Topsail Beach. We've got an inlet, we've got to contend with, we've got Cobra, we've got the beaches in Cobra, we've got the federal project that we may or may not be able to actually pull off because of the increase in cost. I could see, I could see the split easily being seventy percent for us and just pulling this out of nowhere, really pulling it out of thin air, seventy percent for us and the other thirty percent, you know, being divided up between the two towns, provided they were both interested, and now we find out that one is at least not this year. It could easily go seventy fifteen and fifteen, or sixty twenty and twenty. But, you know, so to me that means whoever it is, if they're going to hang their hat physically somewhere, it's going to be in our town hall. You know, I assume they'll be working primarily from home or from their office, but, you know, it's still weighted, it's still weighted towards us, and that means that the cost will be towards us. Right, and I think that would be the plan, whatever we decided stat wise of the person's time that we needed. We get first choice at that percent and pay that percent of salary, and then if the other towns want to do a course of that, which I think Topsail Beach is just, and what I, my discussions I've had with Mayor Smith, they would take up, like you say, the leftover percentage. But my question, let's go back to the actual job description and see if it covers what we want this person to do, what our expectations are of this person.
I had just a couple of things when I looked at this. One is, I support what he said. I don't, you know, frankly, with Mr. Eats brought this up, in terms of him representing Surf City and us about the conflicts, there may be times where this person, you know, and I'll give you an example. I think this person ought to be looking into a grants and stuff out there, because this will pay for itself, in my opinion. If they're out looking for money for us, we don't want that, we don't want that loyalty to be split, to save ten or fifteen thousand dollars and have that loyalty split between us and somebody else in terms of grants and everything else, right? We want them to be our advocate for the things that we're doing, right? And like I said, just guessing, there are, you know, I mean, I've heard scholarships out there, you know, for kids, they didn't know existed, there's gotta be grants out there, that we just have somebody out there looking for that kind of stuff. And I didn't see that in here specifically, but I think that that is something that, and, you know, maybe it's implied in here. But anyway, my point there is, I agree, I agree with him. I think that this ought to be something, if we're going to do it, that we do it, okay? And that, because, you know, look at the money that's being managed right now, all right? And to have somebody in charge of, you know, all the stuff we've got going on now, to be able to look at that stuff continuously for us, to find out what kind of funding and stuff is there, I mean, this is a no brainer.
It's on page two of the three page, speaks grants and other funding sources for beach owners and Shoreline Protection projects. It's in the... We got that point, okay? Any other items that we need? Well, just, just for looking board members' background. Some of the background upon the genesis for this, Carter County has a county beach guy. His name's Greg Rudy Rudolph, and his first name's Greg. He, he basically, he's a county employee, works, works in the county government office, and he coordinates all of the beach projects and all of that stuff for them that's beach related to where it really takes a big burden off the local town governments that would be what, Indian Beach, Cape Carteret, Emma Isle, where else is up that way? So I think, I think a lot of what we're trying to do is pattern, pattern this position and this individual off of Rudy Rudolph, except that there are significant differences in that he coordinates for accounting, and this person would be coordinating for an island predominantly for our town. And I don't even know, I, I know that we got this job description from the MAPS folks, right? But, you know, my question to Dave way back when we first started reviewing this, you know, over a month ago, was where did they get it? Because I would have to guess that they didn't start with a blank screen when this thing, and I wonder how much of this is Rudy's job description.
I was gonna say, I think most of the team from Carteret County.
Yeah. So, but, you know, again, so their situation is different than ours. Ours is more unique in that it's a town, not a county, you know, our, our island doesn't even all fit into one county. We, you know, we straddle too, so... So this person... Yeah, done. So this person would be a technical advisor to the Topsail Beach, Beach Committee. And in the discussions I had with Mayor Smith, this person would be a technical advisor to Topsail Island Shoreline Protection Commission. And in that regards, that person would be representing the whole island. Surf City would be included through the Shoreline Protection Commission. And then, of course, as you've already discussed, would have played the...
Why would he need to be in, or she need to be an advisor on the committee?
Because we're hiring, we're talking about a hybrid system.
I understand, but we already know that Surf City is not interested right now. So I think if that's the case, if he's representing North Topsail Beach, then he would be on the committee representing North Topsail Beach.
Well, he wouldn't be on the commission, he'd be a technical advisor.
I guess that's the part I'm disputing.
Well, if nothing else, he can sit in the audience as our advisor, but our, the charter for the Shoreline Protection Commission, you know, stipulates where the membership originates, and with us, with us, it's two board members and a citizen member. And then it's an alternate board member, you know, as a third person, and it's a, it's a, it's a second citizen, as a, as a citizen alternate, to backfill either, either of the respective primaries. But, but, you know, he could be there kind of like, you know, the mayor, Dan Timman, used to go to the meetings and sit in the front row. He can sit in the front row. I don't think we're going to change the charter of the Shoreline Protection Commission to accommodate this guy. And if you look at the situation in Carteret County, Rudy Rudolph is the technical advisor to their shoreline, what they call the Shore Protection Commission.
I'm not, I'm not disputing that it might migrate that way. I'm just saying in the beginning, if North Topsail Beach citizens are, are paying the salary of this gentleman or woman, that they should be representing North Topsail Beach.
Well, we discussed that before we got here, and we're saying that we would determine what percent of the hundred percent salary that would be North Topsail Beach, and he would work for our town for that percent of time, and then if Topsail Beach wanted thirty percent of his time, then he would be a technical advisor to their beach committee, thirty percent.
So they've already, they've already added the thirty percent, because I know...
No, we're just talking in generalities, because Alderman Leonard mentioned that maybe it would be a seventy thirty split.
Well, what we had said, though, is initially to get somebody in the door, if they're going to be a consultant paid out of North Topsail Beach, let's get it started that way. And then again, if it migrates to some type of split with the other two towns, we can work through that. But as long as he's working and we're paying a hundred percent of the salary or per salary, it should be a hundred percent focus on North Topsail Beach.
Right, and that's how it would start, that's how it would start.
And any couple of clear frank questions? Is this person an employee or are we hiring a consultant?
We had talked about having it start as a consultant.
The reason being, you know, I'm just looking at it from our standpoint. One is, I frankly, and, and, you know, the board set a vote on this, I would be more comfortable hiring the person that's employed for a couple of reasons, that we have control over what this person is doing. I never have liked something that you're allocating time. We can always go back and say, you know, Topsail Beach, if you want some of our employees' time, then you will reimburse us for that employee's time.
And we can, we can talk about, there was nothing just behind the consultant part anymore than just ease of getting somebody on board.
But anyway, my, my point, Mayor, is I, I think, based on our discussions, particularly because we're paying, we'll be paying the lion's share of this, we need control of this individual, okay? And the problem, you're hiring a consultant, you don't know, it's like a law firm, you don't know if they're billing sixty hours a week, eighty hours a week, forty hours a week, or whatever. And I just like the idea, and, you know, Mr. Benson had brought this up, you know, they can be out there looking for grants for us. I don't think we want any split loyalty on this thing, and frankly, I think the difference in cost, if you're hiring me as a consultant, I'm going to load it up with the benefits anyway. It's not like they're getting off cheap.
I don't, I think that that could be an easy, an easy discussion, as I said, there was no other ulterior motive behind consultant person's loyalty over them.
Yes, well, and also the fact that one of the towns is already backing out, you know, and saying, we're not going to do it this year. If we're hiring them, and we're, and these, we're paying a greater percentage this year for them, I just don't think that's materialized, is it?
Let's back up a second. We are looking at a MAPS job description for an employee for the town. It was not written on the basis of a consultant.
That's why I was confused, that's a point that resonated.
I was confused too, because I didn't realize we were thinking about the possibility of hiring a consultant. And I'm not sure what the town managers' thoughts are on this, and we're looking at it as a town position, I think it's part of the head. I was looking at it as a town position, and it's equivalent to a...
And again, that's funny, when this conversation came up, it just was a ease of start and then migrate into employee, it wasn't...
What you're saying is get them in the door, then we can figure out...
We didn't want to be held up for the other two towns to decide on what they wanted to do.
Right, and I think what Mr. Benson's saying, we're not, because one of them's backing out. Yeah, no, I'm, I'm fine with that, I like the job description, and I think, as I said, I got confused because it's Mr. Benson's point. This is a job description for an employee.
And we had to, even if, no matter how we onboarded them, we should give the job project.
Okay, let's staple this special now from there here. We've had some ideas out on the table, and I think it fits in. Uh, we've had, uh, some ideas out on the table, and I think it fits in. The other items here, the Shoreline Protection Section, so we can come back to that, but let's, uh, let's jump back to the beginning of the agenda there.
Okay, so can we just, and I apologize for being late, I knew this was gonna happen at some point in time, but I was almost on time at the library, so.
You didn't, you didn't hear the discussion I had with Laura. I sent her an email the day before every one of these meetings to confirm we were having it. Even though my wife tells me that they're always gonna be there, I'm like, I don't care, I'm sending.
Well, I was gonna try to, I was getting ready to text Laura, 'cause I usually do, and say, where am I supposed to be? And my, my alert came up for the meeting, so I'm like, oh, it's.
There you go. We're actually proceeding on isolation, I was an hour early for the meeting and for the library last.
Okay. Once we get in the same, once we get in the same location, we all promised we could be there on time.
Well, I got, kinda like the attorney, I, coming from, from my house over here, I got stuck in traffic. It was, it was one bicycle.
I must say, it's a pleasant surprise to see Mr. Peters, so I'm thrilled that we have a person.
Walking, walk, yeah, guy walking a poodle, it was a traffic jam.
I don't think we're ready to make a decision here, we're gonna need to pull this into some other, uh, discussions, so let's just table this and come back to it.
Yeah, that's fine, we table it, though, I'd like, just an idea how much, what we're talking about salary-wise, too. Um, you don't have to answer now, we're gonna come back to it, I just wanted to give you some time to, I'm gonna ask the question, so.
That was exactly the question, right?
Okay, so you already, you already gave the approval of the agenda?
Yes.
All right, so we are on, um, board candidates. So of course, we don't have the town time here today.
Can I update you guys on, when I, after our last call, real quick?
Yep.
Um, I reached out to everybody on the list, we had one gentleman who I won't name that you gave me the card on, and then no answer to any of those, I didn't do the one of those, I reached out to everybody. Um, I would have to say that, um, people are very appreciative of the call. And, uh, one of the things that I think that was, was good about it is they, is asking, and, and I asked everybody kinda the two basic questions. One is, do you have the time? And the second one is, why haven't you volunteered in the past? Why haven't you been involved in town and stuff before? I, you know, and if it was, you know, some people just moved here or whatever. Um, but I think that, um, I, I enjoy the conversations, um, and, uh, one of the things I think we gotta think about is how to do, and we brought it up in the last meeting, trying to do things for the town, get together outside of the forest season, um, you know, 'cause I, I just ordered an email, the one the gentleman had sent me about, we gotta do this and that, and fundraisers and stuff like that. I think that, you know, we got what, fourteen or fifteen miles of beach, we're very spread out. Uh, and I think it would be great for that kinda stuff, um, and to put together, we don't have, I think it's like their committees or whatever, but having something, as you suggested, um, or following whatever, I think would be a really good thing. And I, and also, I think somebody mentioned in here about having something for your part, um, I think those are great things to do. Um, 'cause one of the things that we stress in all these calls, that's so true in this town, is one or two votes makes a difference in this kind of. Somebody I was talking to said it was an election, so there's a four-vote difference. And so, you know, you change two votes, you gotta tie, you change three votes, you gotta win, um, you know, it's pretty amazing. In two thousand fifteen, I was not re-elected by five votes. Or less, either three or five, I mean, it, it comes down, it's, it's like student council. It really is, in terms of voting, and, you know, what, what will grow in an election? So anyway, it was, it was good for me, and I, you know, I didn't promise anybody I was gonna vote for them or not vote for them, so. I think what we need, but I think it was very good, you know, for me it was good, because I hadn't promised. I think moving forward, we need to talk process, how we're gonna do this, and.
That's a nice process, I think.
Yep. What suggestions are you gonna wanna lead it off, or what?
If you have suggestions.
Well, I would think that probably, like Brian told us, uh, the attorney told us the last meeting, is, you know, we start with the written, with a name on them, you know, we, we, we do, do write-ins, and you read them off, and then when we get down, we see where, where a round or two of that takes us. Uh, and then from there, and then from there, we go with a, you know, if we, we, we have, we have a clear majority, it's done. If we, we don't have a clear majority, then, and we, we discuss, and we do it again, maybe, and then we don't have to have a clear majority or a winner, uh, you know, then we, then, then we do nominations, or however, however it should go, is that, would you have thought?
Well, he, he had mentioned that process, Tom, which I'm, I'm, and by the way, just to the board members, I'm fine with whichever, however you all want to do it, as long as it's clear and it's correct, and, and I'm sure Laura cannot keep this on track here. Um, he also mentioned, Tom, I thought, a process of the non-written, where somebody make an appointment, it's voted, if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, then we go to the next candidate.
My, yeah, well, my understanding was we would do that if, if the, if the written ballot.
As the next.
Yeah, so it would be like phase two. The other thing I would suggest is, uh, is that Laura, as she's doing right now, make the ballots so they all look the same. So you're not reading one from Tom that says, you know, he's nominated. Well, we have certain names on it anyway, they have to have our names. I understand that, but what I'm saying is, I, I thought the way it worked is, it doesn't have to say that, that Rick Grant nominated someone else, which he says.
The name, and then you sign it.
Right, they will not say that during this meeting, but when Laura records the minutes.
That's right, as in who nominated, and everything else, 'cause I think, um, actually, I think, kind of attorney made it, maybe you did at the last meeting. You don't wanna be bad-mouthing somebody that's gonna be sitting next to you next week.
Yeah, we see it during.
Okay, so do we want, do we wanna start now?
Laura's, yeah, Laura's gonna pass out, yes.
Just to be clear, we're gonna do a nomination phase.
That's it.
And then, once we, once we have the nominees, then we're gonna do a written ballot.
I understood it, unless that nomination phase results in a majority, and then that's, that's the decision.
That's where we got in trouble last time.
No, it's not where we got in trouble last time.
We need to sign the ballot.
Well, the ballot should be signed.
Well, I think what, what.
Well, it's not a ballot, it's not a nomination.
No, no, it's not, it's, they should, they have to be signed, otherwise it's a secret, secret ballot, and that's, that's against our.
So.
No, you write your name, and you write the name of the candidate.
You guys are saying the same thing. I think what you're saying is, if you, if this called a nomination or ballot, piece of paper comes to you, if everybody writes the same exact person on it, there's no sense in going to a second phase.
If three or four, right, if you have a clear majority, if three people write the same name, we're done.
If everybody writes a different name.
Otherwise, it is nothing but a nomination. Wait a second. First, you have to write your name on that piece of paper and the person you're nominating.
Yes.
This is, on the board, this is a ballot.
Right.
We're, we are voting on a ballot.
That's the best one, but, I like that.
That's fine, as long as we're clear what we're doing, you know, nomination is different than a.
Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, but you have to write your name and the person's name, who you, who you're gonna, now, I'm gonna use. When you say ballot, though, let me just, I'm gonna ask you a question, so I can put in the easiest way for me to understand it. One, two, three, four of us.
Not me, but.
Okay, right, so, four different names coming in, Smith, Jones, Grant, and Leonard, all four different names coming out. Are they fine? So now we have four names on a ballot, we have no consensus. The next step, then, is what? We list all four of those people, and then we vote on those four?
Yeah.
Right? And then, then, that does, I know I'm getting it all in detail.
No, I understand.
So then, so then we go through that, and let's just say that that ends up two-two, or three-one. All right, or, so that two of the people get eliminated, now we've got two people left. So we have to keep going until we get three out of, right? Is that, does that make sense, everybody? I think that's what you were saying, I saw it. So now I can choose, because my understanding is it's just saying, four people, four ballots, okay? Oxley, 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 you're done. Gilbry, you're done. You're done. Okay, you're done.
We're saying the same thing.
I'm looking at, there's not, there's not a three, what I'm looking at is, is that, we come up and it's different, right, right. Okay, because, you know, part of it is you want people to understand that everybody that applied has been concerned, that's my point. Right, perfect, okay, we're good.
I agree.
Okay, I thought that's what you said. Let's roll with it and make sure it works. Pass them out. The chips fall where they're meant. I'm not good with chip. Who's chip? 'Cause it's, I keep doing this, I have to turn it off.
Mr. Peters is quick to all of the dark.
You can't nominate me again.
Well, we can't appoint you, I guess.
Peter's, did Rose kick you out of the house this morning? Is that why you're here in person?
I'm sorry.
Did Rose kick you out of the house this morning? Is that why you're here in person?
Not formally.
Yes.
Close. Mayor, would you like to read, or would you prefer that I?
You can read, please.
I would let her.
From now, Laura, you're just reading.
Just the, just the name of the person.
Yes.
Besides, she could read my signature.
I'll figure out the attorney's signature and then we'll do it.
Okay, um, there are two votes for Susan Meyer, one for Deborah Coltrane, and one for Connie, perhaps, Lat, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Yeah, yeah. Latie. Wow, okay.
Flattle, flattle.
Okay.
So two, one, one.
Okay, so then we need to, um, actually.
We re-go on those three.
We vote on those, yeah.
Okay. You don't draw funny faces on your ballot this time, you're just retiring. And then you need to read the names one more time. Thank you. You gonna read them, Laura?
Happy to.
Before we do, you've got Constance, you've got Deborah, and Susan Myers, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What are you doing? That would be stirring it up. Okay, we have three votes for Susan Meyer, and one vote for Connie, and I'm so sorry, you got, you only have a.
Flattle.
Flattle, Connie's flattle. So it is three to one.
Okay, so the board member will be Susan Meyer. Okay. Next item on the agenda is going to be the budget, and this will be sealed by.
We got the new ones. They have enough new ones.
I, I did see that.
Of course, we're not today. Caitlin and I are, you know, first time through this extended learning experience of, uh, as we explained to you last time, of course, our biggest problem is revenue. We've got to every department that we've had, we've managed to decrease expenses virtually everywhere, it's a, a fire department and, uh, buildings. What we were explaining was that we've been trying to, in some cases, get better clarification on, on what monies were coming in, especially from insurance on the town hall. Um, and of course, uh, we're already maybe adjusting the money the county gave us. Um, as it turns out, the information that we were initially given on the town hall was incorrect. Uh, the bulk of the insurance money has been paid to this, the town hall is insured for three hundred eighty thousand dollars. We're estimating, uh, six hundred thousand. There's, uh, I think it was, Caitlin, correctly, in Florida, it was something like two hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars already received on that, that is put into the fund balance, that where we could, conceiving we'd pull it out, uh, we're not recommending that we do. But apparently, we're gonna be stuck for a much larger portion of that building than we had expected, that we're operating things.
Hey, before you do that, sorry, I'm confused. So we're looking at the expenses on the public buildings, okay, 'cause it's up, it's calling four hundred thousand dollars, so. So what we're saying in there, though, is that we've got two eighty-seven, but you're not counting the two eighty-seven in revenues? So we're just showing it, okay, just wanna make sure, so from a cash standpoint, we've already gotten a bunch of it. But we're showing, but we're showing, right, okay, just wanna make sure I understood.
Yeah, if you, we're looking at the budget package we gave you last time, I believe it showed, uh, four hundred thousand dollars in insurance money. Right, coming in, of course, only remaining seventy-nine thousand, but is the claim still up?
I, I believe it is, though it could go up.
Uh, I'm not sure if I understood it correctly, Caitlin, if this grew up to the limit of what the building is insured for.
Yeah, from how the, our brokerage explained it to me yesterday, around the eighty thousand average is what we'll receive. We, if we were to, uh, let's see, he said by, um, it does not include any enhancements unless it's required, but ordinance or law is written in the policy, so he was saying, if there was some law ordinance that forced us to make an enhancement, that that could cause us to receive additional reimbursement.
Some of the fire code enhancements may.
If our policy speaks to that, he was unsure at the time if it did or not. So from how I was understanding it, eighty is the max, unless our policy speaks to enhancing based on the current.
Check we?
Eighty, eighty thousand remaining of the claim.
And what we had talked about previously, too, was possibly hiring, um, and a, a private adjuster to see if we could improve upon what we received, but if we're at the limit of the policy, I don't know what private adjuster.
Well, to follow up on her comment, though, why is the insurance agent who's getting a nice premium from us every year not coming back to us and writing? I'm not directing this, you know, coming back to us and writing and telling us what enhancements we can do. For example, if the fire chief comes back and said, oh, now, from that one, you know, from here, my guess is some of the things we're doing in there are because the codes changed from when we first built the building, right?
Fire codes out because y'all are going back exactly like you were. So y'all chose not to do the fifty percent rule, so the fire goes out because y'all are going back exactly like you were.
But other building codes may, right, or not, there are other things.
I mean, whenever we tie, whenever we tie, it has to come off the code.
Right.
Though the, if the electrical's not off the code, that has to be off the code, those types of things.
That's what I'm asking, so I mean, that's, but it seems to me that if broker, who's collecting a nice brokerage every year, should come back to us and say, here's the things you can use, here's the things you can't, we will hire someone.
Well, she just.
Or didn't you?
It only has to be brought up if y'all went over that fifty percent threshold of the value cost of the building.
Really?
And y'all chose to go back exactly like it was, so y'all should, so that kept y'all under the fifty percent.
Send grandfather back to the codes that were in place at the time the building was built? That's what I thought.
Now, some of the enhancements, uh, for example, metal roof as opposed to the asphalt roof, we have, uh, highly rated windows as opposed to the windows that are, are being covered up, we have going with Neve Grant, so that's a whole separate issue, and that is active.
Okay, so we have somebody going back now, yeah.
Yes, somehow, yeah. But, you know, as you can see, that's.
Well, I was trying to get to it, it's a mismatch in terms of funding, 'cause we have cash in one year and expenditure the next.
Right. And now it's going to be expensed.
Okay.
So one of the things that we did, uh, going back to your discussion at the last meeting, uh, was to take a look at the split between funding and. was to take a look at the split between Fund 10 and Fund 30 and whether or not that could be adjusted and our understanding from the fire finance office at the time. So we have a couple of choices. We can go with, stick with the 65, 35 and put through a tax increase, which I don't recommend because in the way COVID-19 has devastated people, especially those looking, depending on rental income as well as employment, it would just be adding insult to injury. We could make a temporary adjustment to the 75, 25, which actually gives us a little bit of, I hate to call it surplus, but the contingency. And we could, we could choose to do that, say, for example, for one year. Because hopefully, the House of, I guess it's sending the 831, which is now in the session, is to increase the occupancy tax to municipalities like us by an additional percent. Money to be used at our discretion. It doesn't have to go by a particular activity. I recommend that we take that money, put that into Fund 30 when that materializes to make up for any change we made now and even pay it back if in fact our revenues prove to be better than expected.
So that increases the ceiling from six percent to seven or is?
I believe it's six to seven, yeah.
Okay. So is that.
Is the county piece, you know, are they going to try to take half of that?
Yeah.
This is so new that it hasn't come up yet.
That's kind of.
But I would be willing to drive over and sit with the county manager and get some guidance.
And just to follow up on your comment. Okay, you know, to do something one time, I don't necessarily have a problem with. But it seems to me that that's something we ought to be looking at every year. That we shouldn't say, if we're getting this money from that, we ought to put it in this fund. It's something you said in the last meeting is, we don't know how many hurricanes, we don't know what other damages are coming up. And I think that if we, if we just say, you know, now, again, I'm back to priorities, which I would like to talk to, you know, maybe in our next meeting. When we get past the budget stuff is, what can we afford? What can we not afford? Where are we going to spend stuff? Or I get very nervous about grants being built into operating revenue. Those type of things. And I just think that, and I don't know, you were here, I think you said, when the first allocation was done. I think we have to look, I don't know, 65, 35 is the right number? 70, 30, 60, 40? And I think it's going to depend on what the circumstances are back here, as long as we're doing that, you know, that kind of stuff. Because we have, and again, I went through the audit book and we've got, you know, restricted funds. We may have more restricted funds. We have to take all that into account, I think, as, as a board, before we start spending money we don't have. That's all I'm saying is I, I have no problem with doing something to, for us to be in line, because I think you're also going to have the issue with the audit if we start, if we get below whatever the, that threshold is in terms of complying with the audit stuff. That if we're not moving money up in there, now we're pulling out of that, we may not pass the audit number next year. I'm just saying, I think we ought to do it year by year and look at the allocation and decide.
Again, I have some concerns too, not with the proposed options. I appreciate all the work that's gone into that. When we talk, going back to town hall, though, it's going to be a little bit difficult to keep the project on, on track and not have any overages as well.
It always is with those projects. Name of the 600 is a testament until they go out. I really have no idea what is.
Exactly, I know. That's, I'm not, and that's not, I'm not faulting staff for not having that. And we just don't have it. But I, I want the board to understand that we really don't know if that's.
It's fluid.
Or not.
It's fluid.
It's fluid. I have not had a, had a remodel project yet that's come in exactly where I want it to be.
Well, and I would add on there too is if you, you go with the other budget, which we were negative, which I have a problem with. We've only have $100,000 in contingency for the year. Though then, you know, with what you suggested, so to your point, you know, looking at it three or four, you know, we don't know what revenues are going to be. You know, is it different between actual and estimates? One's an actual?
We always do have the, the alternative going into fund balance.
But then you get into solvency issues and everything else.
I mean, I personally would prefer to try and leave the fund balance untouched, because if we do have a storm, that's our money to get the debris cleaned up so we start with. But I'm just saying.
That was because we knew we were going here.
And that's, and that's okay. I'm just saying we have a healthy fund balance right now. And I prefer to focus on the actual budget, not automatically trying to tap money on.
We knew it was no different than taking money, telling you, buying a car, you're going to sell the old one yourself. You take the money out of savings, you know you're going to put back on the car side. And the other thing to point out of the budget goes back to the mismatch that we just talked about is, now, unwood, if New Town Hall gets done this year, that's a $600,000 expenditure. So we have no revenue for it this year, okay? That will not, I hope, occur next year, okay? Assuming we don't have a big, but my point, though, is right this year, what you're talking about is an allocation to take advantage, to take care of an issue. It's hopefully a one-time issue, which is not the town hall.
So can I just interrupt for one second? Can we just all make sure we speak up for those on the phone? But also, Mr. Peters can hear, so you might have to actually sound like you're yelling, but.
What I was talking about is, we've got this year, we have to pay for the building, the $600,000. The cash that came in was last year.
Right.
All right? So what they're proposing is to move some of the funding that we've got coming in from one fund to the other, so we can take care of that one big block this year, which I'm fine with. But I think every year, we should take a look at how we allocate our money. Because we might have another bad issue or we might not have any issue. Might decide to go 80, 20 one year, okay? Because we don't have the expense and we had a revenue increase. And then we can put money in the third, we can do other stuff with it as we go down the road. Because the other thing to keep in mind is, we're looking at a major project on the south end right now that is going to take a lot of the cash, any cash that we've got going forward. So I'm saying, I think that we need to be fiscally responsible in things we're doing.
I, I would point out also that, like the town hall, the town park was being substantially funded out of our general fund. Caitlin's managed to get a few of those invoices into this year, but that is another expense that will not recur, that we deal with this year.
Okay.
So next year, assuming normal revenues, assuming normal accommodation taxes for that part. And assuming that we lose some of these millstones on their neck, we should be in very good shape. So we're projecting town hall and 600K for repair. We have, we have what amount of insurance money? What was the number?
287.
So we may need to come to 79,000 and change that to 80,000.
We've got a 287. 287 plus 80. Okay. But the 287 is here.
Right.
So it's not cash. Their, their budget is not showing.
Right.
Coming at.
Right.
And then you want to follow up on the park? How much we got left in the park?
So far, we've paid about $224,000 on the park. I'm expecting and projected in the budget to pay about another $140,000 this fiscal year. So I left.
So between the two, it's 740 this, this year, this coming year?
And.
60140.
240 remaining on the park.
Oh, they said 140.
I, I projected another 140 to pay out this year on the park, on the park. So it's.
In 2000, the, the one that starts a month from now?
Yes.
What number do you have in there?
240.
So it's 840. At one and a half in the next fiscal year.
Right.
And that's a big, that's a big number.
Yes.
And no revenue associated with it at all, except for maybe the 70, whatever, 79,000.
We do have some amount of money coming back on the park, but I, I originally had that in the budget. Since we've been, we've already paid out 224,000, I removed that from the budget because I can go ahead and apply for that reimbursement this fiscal year and not next. So I removed it.
So between the park and the town hall, we're looking at $473,000 for next year.
840.
840.
Because the budgets are cash. We don't, she's on the accrual basis, she's looking at cash. So cash is already this year, expenses next year.
Right.
And the net of this year, or getting the cash that came in, is 840.
Okay. That's a big number.
You subtract, you subtract the cash that we've gotten. And then you're down, yes, to 240 or to, to 473, yes. So we're looking at, you know, money that we have not given, and may not be reimbursed for.
Right.
We're looking at 473. Call it a half a month.
Yeah.
Call it a half of any matter.
Here, here's a point I'd like to make. We're talking about the money that we have spent on town parks compared already in this year. So that was a budget in this year's budget. So it's coming out of the surplus, whether we like it or not, okay? The surplus we had was 66% of our budget. The purpose of the budget surplus is for unexpected emergencies. These repairs to the park and town hall are unexpected. We can justify to the league that, yeah, we have a fund balance of 66%, but we had, and these repairs that we had no income from insurance wise, what, pretty big repairs. So I would just bring the board's attention that maybe letting the budget surplus of all of these one-time costs would be the way to go, rather than taking money out of Fund 30, which is not going to be replaced. Just without much further down the road, putting any sand on the beach, if we take money from Fund 30 to make this work.
Is there any prospect, David, that we could get any assistance from the Golden Leaf Fund? Or were these some of these extraneous expenses that were incurred?
We are going to get assistance with the town hall for what they call the modifications that will be included as resiliency for the storm, that being the windows, the ceiling, you know, or the roof rim. And there were two other upgrades, including like retaining wall on the side. But I don't believe that further than that, that we, no, I don't see that. No idea what that amount would be. When they did the project, they would did those items as an alternate, so that they'll have a separate.
And if I can't even respond to this.
That's it.
I think we ought to be protecting the beaches as well. But what I've heard and what I've read is that the allocation between 10 and 30 is arbitrary. And whether it's 65 or 75 or 20 or whatever, it could be that it should be 50, 50, whatever, because we don't have, we have certain ones. But I think that if we don't take care of issues like this, I'm concerned about the solvency issue for a couple of reasons. One is, if we actually go forward with that project down there, we're going to have a huge amount of debt. Well, I think we ought to be presenting, but before we mention, we give a bunch of sand litigation on that part. And I think what you said, Mr. Benson, before is, we're going to put sand on sand. But if we go forward with the project, we're going to. They're going to be back guessing. On the legislature, what I'm saying, though, is, is that when, when we look at it, do a one-time, different allocation, as you suggest, to get us through a $840,000 shortfall, when you're talking about taking, what's the total number, Caitlin, that we're, we're moving? The 10% ends up being what, $300,000? Is that right? We're only talking $300,000 is a one-time thing. And maybe next year, we look and we don't have any problems and we got rental. And we take it back to 80% and then cut from that. But my feeling is, it should be our obligation and algorithm to make sure that we can afford the projects that we're looking at. It goes back to priorities. And while I think that the, taking care of the beach is a high priority, I think public safety is a higher priority. And I really go back to what we're going for.
And the only thing I'm going to add there is, I think one of the, and I, and I hope everybody appreciates, who does listen and watch this, is we're being asked to approve or deny a project between, after a few years. So it's very easy for us to say that Phase 5 has, they do have sand right now. That doesn't mean it's not, many things can happen between now and, and then.
Yes.
So.
Not only do they have sand, they're going to get some more.
No, I understand. I'm simply just, I'm simply just saying that it's very easy to, if this project was fixed apart next week, that'd be a much easier decision than a project where we're asked to go down that, you know.
And I kind of, to kind of summarize the whole thing, very, you know, in very general terms, we're still licking our wounds for hurricane recovery. And that, that is what has got this thing right now, where it's at with respect to the town hall, the town park. And it is, it's, it's issues that we can't control, we have no control over, but we still need to get fixed so we can get back into town hall, obviously. And, you know, it, it's not a normal, a normal five-year cycle, three-year cycle, any, any kind of cycle when you have two back-to-back storms like that. And, and we're just going to have to, we're going to have to do what we need to do to get through this. So we get back.
For what?
Yeah, so we can kind of get back to where we should be and then, and then look long-term at things like fire stations and beaches. Things we have to go on hold. Just a quick question. I thought, I agree with you that that project is not supposed to start for a long time. But I thought the town attorney told us, we're going to have to start making written contractual commitments within the next month or so.
Yes. That's, that's what I'm trying to say, is we're being, we as a board are being asked to commit to things in the near future that aren't going to happen physically along.
And I go back to something that Alvin Benson said, that still shocks me, is when you were talking about the cost of that project. And I just think that's something to me, we step back and look at it and say, and it starts with, can we afford it? It's a great project, but.
Well, yeah, but we also need to negotiate. There's been no negotiation at this point. So, and, and I would also say that it depends on what contractual things we're being asked to sign.
I agree.
Is there anything here that says that we can pull out if we needed to? We don't know what's going to happen between now and when this project starts.
Exactly.
Right. But is there a way that we can consult with the, the league about their concern if we were to use that 66% budget surplus of this one, these one-time expenses that would be the legal, the OGC? Yeah. Yeah, OGC is what I'm talking about. They're the ones that, that control.
Yeah.
But then what do we do if there is a storm? Yeah, I'm still going to go back.
Well, there was a storm. We're trying to recover from.
But we're just going.
Hurricane storms.
Great. Just going into hurricane season and I, I understand what you're saying. I just, it's not that I disagree with it, but I, I feel that we're in this position we're in right now because we weren't financially prepared for the last two storms that we are now paying to recover from.
And honestly, I think that, I understand the discussion, I understand the concerns about Fund 30 versus, you know, when we're talking $300,000 and here we've got close to a million dollars in expenditures and no revenue.
But it's also up to the board to make adjustments from one fund to the other.
That's my point.
So if we were to use Fund 30 for some of the, the park or town hall, if we do have an excess of revenue that.
You can kick it back in?
We can put it back. That's, that's.
That's my point. Rather than trying to get waivers on things and everything else, I believe, and we can confirm this, it sounds like, we have the discretion to allocate for this year. Right, for this year, you know, several hundred thousand dollars, understanding that there may be a concern about, we can put that back in, we have surplus or whatever. Because in theory, under this budget, and I hate to say this because it'll probably jinx the town, okay? If you have a normal year next year without this, we will have a surplus of more than $300,000. And then we can decide what to do with that surplus. Well, we've learned some lessons here and with regard to what happens when you have a storm. And I think the last big storms that came through here that there was a board of aldermen, probably Fran and Bertha, that really did a lot of damage to the town. It was much more extensive than what we had this time with these two. But some other lessons learned are, you know, we should have probably had somebody come out and take a look at town hall and, and raise our insurance threshold. We probably should have put a. We probably should have put a steel roof on the darn thing at some point in time and upgraded the windows, because I'll tell you now, if we had a steel roof when Florence came through, we'd be, we'd be having this meeting in town hall right now. So, I mean, I know it's, it's not could've, would've, should've, but let's look at, let's look at all the lessons we needed to learn from this, from this experience and what we need to do better next time. Part of it is, and we're going to do it, is, you know, building a bit more of a storm, storm-proof town hall. And, and, you know, now, now some of us who've been here a while and, and others who were just getting here as, as part of the town government are understanding, you know, what it really means and what, what the long-term ramifications are of, of a storm and when you got to pay for it if your insurance doesn't cover it all. So, so, you know, but just, I'm not really getting anywhere with that comment other than we've learned a lot.
I do have a follow-up to that note. So I think our biggest risk, because right now the town hall is dry. Right, so now we're talking about putting it back together. But we've, we've, as you mentioned, Mr. Gilbert, we have so much money tied up in that town park right now. We still have that breach in the dunes across the street. So I don't know if there's a way that our public works is able to close, at least close out, you know, where people are walking through?
On the county side.
Well, we get a nice storm, that's all going to overwash through our town park again.
Well, what are, what are the calls? County said that they were going to store that dune as part of the project.
I know, but we've already entered hurricane season, so I'm just saying when it, that's my, and you all might have.
Yeah, that is a major, you're right. Well, the other thing I would point out too, go by there, and yet it's my, my days as a civil, is that parking lot is nothing but a flat surface that's going to just have the water run right across the street. There's no culverts being, that I've seen, they're not, they're not putting any ditches in, you know, or anything else, it's basically right back to where it was. You know, we used to talk about it after the dunes were gone, every time there was a tide, a tide came across. And, you know, if we destroy the park again, well, that doesn't get blocked.
That's what it did during Florence.
Yeah.
And when, when the tide came over, what happens is all that, all that nice expensive sod, you know, two things kill it, the sand that goes over top of it and then saltwater stays with it, you know, stays with it. And I still got spots in my yard that got wet that don't normally have saltwater and, and they're still, they're still bare. And so, you know, we spent a lot of money on that thing. Yeah.
We don't have any revisited.
So, you know, maybe, maybe on the list, talked to Aliso County about H2B, when do you plan to restore the dune?
Well, I think we need to actually physically request them to get that blocked, you know, rather than.
I agree.
Well, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, because right where the building is right now, it's just, it's, it's a fun.
They're going to tell you that they can't because they're.
Jigging their shell.
Walkway stairs, walkway barriers, it's right where the dune should be because the building is not, it's right in the dune line.
Right, I understand.
They do need to close that.
We just need to close that up. So.
Well, maybe we need to do it.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if it's, well, if it's on the, if it's not in their property, well, I mean, can we do that? I know we're not allowed to work on their property, but I guess that's, if they can't.
They're going to dose it. We don't have to give, yeah, we have to give a permit to do a beach break.
Well, they have a permit, they have a permit. I don't know what's in their permit, but they have a permit.
We already had one now.
We already pushed that once already.
Oh, you already did.
There's a dose of one each time of year with the summer season, I would talk about.
Especially right now.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Can we go back to the, we had a couple of quick questions on the budget?
Of course.
Why is, why is the police budget down? Is that we've replaced people, we got more people, less people? And we answered the fire stuff, I'm just looking at the police department, it is off eight-point-seven-eight percent?
Yes, based on the new personnel policy that you guys approved, the holiday accrual hours for police and fire actually decreased from what they're receiving currently. So the salary line was figured with the previous holiday hours accounted for in that number because they're getting holidays on top of what they're getting paid. So when I fixed the holiday hours to the new accrual rate, it brought that down for police and fire.
Are their paychecks going to change?
They will, previously they were receiving twelve hours for holiday pay for both police and fire.
A year or a month?
Per holiday.
Oh, okay.
Per holiday. So now it's at a prorated basis based on each department's average hours worked.
Right.
So it's a little more equitable. So police will be receiving shy of nine hours and fire will be receiving ten-point-six hours for each holiday. So I figured that, those figures into the salary.
And if they work that day, they get paid on top of that?
Exactly.
Okay. I just was looking at that and I'm like, I thought maybe it was, you know, and I think it was, was the public works, we had the salary changed because I had, you know, you got rid of a hundred and you put in a twenty-five.
That's correct.
Okay.
So the contingency on seventy-five, twenty-five is still higher than what it was when we talked about?
Yes. Yeah, because we took the zero. And now it's a one-hundred. Or what, a third of the park?
Additional questions?
What a motion.
Well, I think at this point.
We're not there yet, okay.
At this point, what would, is the, just, just so we're on the right page, so today it's still providing feedback when we get together, basically, the end of the month is when we would be making a motion to approve the budget.
Oh, that's right, because I do notice.
We got to help with your month.
That should be good.
We get the minutes, so it's a better.
At this, at this point, I just want to, if there's any additional questions or direction for staff to follow along, I just want to make sure that they have. I'm just looking through all my notes from the last one. What did you end up doing with computer warriors, so that gets quite a lot? Are we comfortable with what we have budgeted for that?
We're comfortable with what's budgeted. We haven't yet made a decision on which of the payment plans they are offering. I did speak to Kyle about the shared services. Their guys, you know, were running a lot of hours and they forced over. And I think over the course of the next year, you know, there are a lot of different areas that can be examined and maybe can be better than IT maybe one of them. So we will take my time and try to find something that suits our needs for less money if, if there is some.
And I don't.
And considering what you had suggested too about the exit worth having somebody on staff, I suspect not, but we'll, we'll look into it.
Any other questions on the board? Mr. Peters, any questions on the budget?
Yes. Future projects, what do we anticipate that for?
Let me see that one.
You said in the.
It's on Fund Thirty, it's.
On Fund Thirty?
It's essentially a contingency line item for Fund Thirty. So you won't really have a contingency for Fund Thirty, so instead of naming it that, historically it's been named the future projects. So we can definitely rename that if needed, but essentially a contingency for Fund Thirty.
Well, do we have a similar account for Fund Ten?
We do, it's, it is called contingency.
Okay, we actually have a contingency.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I frankly am not in a position to render any vote regarding this tentative budget. I don't understand it that much yet.
Mr. Peters, do you need some additional help in just going through it to further understand it before the end of the month when we have to vote?
I would, yes.
Okay, so if you can just follow up with Laura and tell us what you need, we'll be happy to make that happen.
And I just got a real quick question on Fund Thirty to follow up on, on this question. Under both of these, the sixty-five and the seventy-five, the accommodation tax we were showing as up three-hundred thousand, I think we talked about that because we think this year we'll, we'll actually be able to ramp version last year.
Uh, no, actually that was adjusted for the, this bill that would increase the accommodations tax for municipalities.
And how much money is in there for that?
Well, we.
It is a one percent.
Trying to figure out what the one percent was of the tax, and I believe it's about three-hundred thousand dollars that would be additional.
Go ahead.
Assuming we get that.
You have a question about whether we slid it or not. I would plan on it being a half a percent.
Yeah.
That's what I was coming to do. It's a, it's a.
And the spirit of the bill was to help the municipalities, not to help the counties and support them. And in fact, they list all those specific counties and we are, we said municipalities and we are in there. Somehow they missed their city and I think possible beach as well.
So we need to follow up on what county's sooner rather than later. So they realize that we're, since our revenues from them, our grant is, is down, we are anticipating and expecting that full one percent. I would just let them know that that's what we're anticipating and expecting.
I agree with that. That's what I was asking, so embedded in there is a little one percent, was that, this was.
Senate Bill Number Eight Thirty-One, sponsored by a seven hundred nickel.
And is that, is that a budget bill? I mean, is that actually going to be asked or is that, or is it just a separate bill or is it attached to a budget?
No, it's a separate bill and the consensus is that it's going to pass even the hospitality lobby is in favor.
Is in favor, okay. And we're assuming that comes in the first day?
Yes.
That's right, we're assuming expenses happen the first day.
Um, under, well, I have a question, I'm sorry to.
No, no, I'm done.
Under revenues, so repaid parking, that's still just considering the very north end, right? Because we've seen a, an increase. So potentially there may be some small ups from there for us if we can, or just an expense, we'll see, see how, as we roll that out.
Hey, we made money on Saturday. We made lots of money on Saturday. Parking tickets, parking fees to.
All that out there, it was packed.
Are they still, Tom, I did have a question about that because I did see the email communication that's been coming in and how crowded it was last weekend. And what they did last year was when it looked like it was full, they had placed signs that said, you know.
Lot closed.
Lot closed or, you know, beach access closed. Are they, had, did you see anything this, this?
On Saturday, we never left the house Saturday, so I never got to the point where I drove down to where they usually used to put it there at the intersection of Bowman, New River and Seagull. They put a sandwich sign up and said, oh, you know, lot full, and that gave people somewhere to turn around before they got all the way down. And that's the old mayor's house.
Yeah.
And a line, so, but I, I never got out to see it, honestly, probably answered a question, a good question from the police department that I, yeah.
If you live here, you don't have to.
No, 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 say it, if you live on the floor, it's right.
You still.
Yes, that's, that's what I'm talking about, yeah. And, and it's, it's, there are a lot of other ones. It's a hundred dollar season pass or it's a twenty dollar day pass. And the number of vehicles I can see from my deck, we, we should have made a lot of money Saturday.
There were two hundred, well, there were two hundred vehicles out there. They've had as many as three hundred at times. Back in the day, if anybody wanted to build a course.
That's what, but that's kind of where I was.
High tide or low tide? Well, there's that.
And they use cargo of the.
Oh, my God, I know.
Okay, so any additional directions for staff on the budget? Nice job, guys.
I will point out that the budget has nothing in it in regards to the South End Fire Department. So just so you guys are aware that it doesn't have anything representing the South End Fire Department. So just to make you guys aware of that.
For the repairs that are needed to even make it.
We, I'm happy to rework those numbers, but without direction of which way you guys were wanting to go, I was unsure how to go about that.
Well, the seventy-five, twenty-five budget would have nine-six-thousand dollars repairs of the South Fire Station.
Ninety-six-thousand dollars, I think, contingency?
I don't think you're particularly looking at any short-term repairs. We got to go give the grant information and start the process of what do we actually want to do there. Some of that will require board direction, do we want to replace the fire station on the same footwork where it is? Do we want to acquire additional land to do a, um, public safety building? So some of that will need some direction on it. I, I don't know that it necessarily has to be in this year's budget.
So, but the one thing that I did forward to the town manager is I did get an email, there are two lots for sale right behind, I don't know if I sent that, did I send that?
No, I was out there, saw you.
Um, right behind the fire station, they had a price reduction and they said that they are interested in getting those sold. And we had originally looked at them when they were first listed as if we could acquire those, that would be a nice, large complex to be able to build everything. So what I will do, and I'm not asking for any decisions or anything at this meeting, but I'll just email you guys out that information on, on those parcels.
You remember what the, what the prices?
I want to say she's reducing to eighty.
I thought it was ninety thousand.
Is it a price reduction?
Yeah. Minus seven-nine, I have to keep them down. And Deb and, Deb and I looked at those when they first came on the market, but I'm not sure who else wants to be next to us out there.
Owner financing. The other, the other comment I would make on that, Mayor, is could we ask Dave at all, obviously we're going through this budget process and stuff, to come back to, I, I think honestly throwing a couple hundred thousand dollars at that station repairs is what's going on. I think we ought to look and figure out.
Special ones that we have to repair?
Well, you know, if you look at the gurgers, everything's rusted out and, you know, there's only so many buckets you can get, you know.
Five bucks a bucket to catch the waters probably. But my point there was, listen, it's not so good money after bathers, interim stuff, you know, because if you come back and that's something you can, if it's hard structure, you can do something. Yeah, it's the range of dollars that we're talking about, it's something we ought to look at hard before we go.
What we do in the plan, again, it, what the board hasn't given clear direction on is what do we do with that building? Do we just replace that one building? Do we do a south end station? We still have the open conversation on the lots in Steeferie, is that something that we're interested in? So, and again, financing on that would not be problematic because there's buildings on it and it's not in a flood zone.
Yeah.
So, and none of that is factored into this.
I mean, if you could come back with a recommendation for, I mean, I guarantee my gut is tear it down and build something else. You probably could use a floor because with the fire station, you've got to have weight bearing, it's got to have rigors and everything else.
At least twelve minutes.
So I think, you know, tearing that whole thing down, and also you got the issue of temporary. So anyway, I just think, you know, come back with a recommendation, it's just looking at it, maintaining it or fixing the roof doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But I think we'll, we'll look to you guys. And I think direction from us is what, tell us what your recommendation is.
We've got to do options out there.
We do have an item on the agenda.
Okay, on the hard structures.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
Okay, good.
Have we given up on finding anything on the island?
No, I found a few lots that are right behind the South End Fire Station, but what I'm saying is we, as a board, have to make a decision on how we want to proceed. Okay, anything else on budget? And we're going to move on with that item. And we're back to shoreline protection. So, Mayor Protem, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you, Ben. In the last board meeting, we tabled the idea of the beach inlet and sound advisory committee. I think that we need to have a discussion of how, if we hire a shoreline protection officer bring the mesh with the beach committee. From the feelings that I have gotten from the board, I think we should, I think I should withdraw the proposal to have a beach committee. I think we should find an alternative to how the board is going to deal with beach nurse. So we've discussed the shoreline protection, job description. I've given you my ideas about the beach committee and they have not been very well-supported at all. So I would just like to open it up for a, a general discussion now, how the board is going to proceed with beach nurse.
I was going to say, I, I think that your comments about the shoreline protection officer and having that versus a committee, we're more likely to get stuff done with an individual reporting back to him and to us than we are having a committee vote on those type of things.
That's, you know, in the beginning, to be honest, I was not so excited about a shoreline protection manager. But the more I thought about it and thought about it, I think you're right. I think that maybe just the shoreline protection manager, and since I'm the, take them in charge for the lead for shoreline protection, we'd be working with this person in conjunction with town staff. We'd be back, in a way, we'd kind of be back the old town manager's working group, which we abolished.
It, it would just seem to me that you, that, you know, we are going to be able to get better direction to, and we, with those tasks and with the background and the description that you've got, that you put together for him.
And remember, we have, we have an engineer as well. So this person has the ability to speak to the board, to, to work with Mr. Benson, to work with the shoreline protection committee, but we also have an engineer, right? So I believe from a resource perspective, they've got what they need to be successful and they can report back up through town manager and the board.
Well, a couple of things. First of all, that engineer right now is not tasked to be the overall projects engineer. He's got specific tasks.
Yes.
Relative to the inlet, relative to phase five. And so we need, we need to address that at some point. And, and either take the engineer we presently have and work the details of the contract that we've got very far. Or we need to, to focus on perhaps finding someone else to do that, preferably someone who's a little bit more local. That was one point. Second point is, as I said, I started going to meetings here in two thousand six. There was a beach committee, um, back then. The alderman disbanded the beach committee. It was run by Dick McCartney and a few other people, I think. You were, you were here back then. Um, they disbanded it. They formed a new beach committee, which I was a member called the Beach Erosion Study Team, the best committee. This committee did their, their study over a year and, uh, in the making. The board at the time didn't like the results they came, came up with. And so the board wouldn't, uh, wouldn't allow the, uh, the best team to formally report out their results. Fast forward from that, we had nothing for a long time. We had basically the, the board alderman serving as the beach committee because I think somewhere in our rules, we have to have one. So for a while the, the board was, and probably to this day, still is, because then we went to have the managers working group, which meant frankly, I didn't think we, we really got very far. Which brings us to today. And where I'm going with all this is I, I, I support, I support the concept of a, of a shoreline protection officer. I think we've tried over the years and my colleague across the table who's been here longer than I and been on the board longer than I, but we've tried this from inside with committees and teams and whatever you want to call them, working groups. And, and we've, we've never really gotten off the dime very far. And I think we need somebody whose, whose paycheck depends on producing results. Accountability, okay? And I think, I think, you know, if I, if that doesn't work, I don't know what the hell we're going to do. Because, you know, we're starting to get out of, out of tricks in our bag. But I, I think, um, we've tried the other, my point, and I'll, I'll shut up here in a minute. My point is we've tried the other way, to your point. It hasn't really worked. And I, I think it's time to give this a try. My only concern about it is we just spent an hour talking about the budget and clearly there's no budget line in there to, to fund this shoreline protection officer pay the salary.
But, and we.
Yeah, I know.
Well, what is the, what is the direction that the board forced down? I mean, Mr. Peterson, you have a question?
I, 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 in reference to what Tom just indicated, you indicated basically we're yet to see any results. Well, is that because we haven't defined what results are? I mean, our biggest issue is Cobra.
Right.
And, and a beach nourishment committee is per se not going to have any success there.
Right.
At least I don't think so. And, uh, so where are we going?
You're, you're correct in that. Let me just, if I, you know, while I'm thinking about it before it goes out the window. Um, you're right in that, in that Cobra is, is a big challenge and we've been, you know, we've been fighting with it for over, what, going on fifteen years at least? And, and it does, it, it is the albatross around our neck because it, it really hampers how we plan. It really hampers how we plan. But, you know, if we were to look at if we didn't have Cobra right now and phase five was for the whole town. You know, what would, you know, phase five was really two through five. What would we do? We surely couldn't afford it, you know? And, um, but I don't think we, you know, we've tried, we, we need to come up with a plan. And I would, I would hope that, that our shoreline protection officer, we would have to give him specific direction that we would hope to get, you know, our manager involved as well as our citizens and our, you know, and our board. But, you know, keep in mind some of the back history things that have been attempted. You know, they did that big survey back in what, two thousand five or six where, where the town basically, you know, town property owners said no to beach, to, to, to beach restoration because they didn't want to pay for it. You know, it still comes back to the philosophy that everybody wants a nice beach, but nobody wants to pay for it. And, and, and we will always fight that with a town that is probably seventy percent or better, uh, you know, uh, uh, investment properties, unoccupied, you know, owner, owners don't occupy. Uh, we're always going to fight that. It's a challenge. It's, it's part of the mix that, that we've got to figure how to get around. But, you know, we have done things, you know, we've done the study on the inlet. We've done phase one. We've done phase five. And we did all of those since two thousand twelve. So in the last eight years, we've done two major beach projects and we've done the inlet study for the, for the groin, or at least begun it. So we've, in spite of not having a shoreline protection officer or a committee, you know, primarily based upon who the managers were and what their interests were and backgrounds and, and really thinking about Steve Foster here and how good he was with that stuff, we've been able to get things done. But it's not been a coordinated effort, which was why we went back to talking and passing a, uh, passing a measure to, to, to hire or contract with an engineer to oversee everything that we still haven't done, which brings us to now. And, and, you know, the next challenge is going to be when we hire this guy or gal to figure out, you know, and in writing, it's, you know, stipulate what we want for them to do. Because just fix the beach isn't a good, a good enough set of marching orders.
And it comes back to the job description that we're discussing because we need the job description to be broad enough that it allows the board to give direction, the town manager actually to give directions to this person. So we need to be, I think, very.
Specific.
Thorough, specific with our, with our job description.
I would just say.
I'm really not hearing any changes from what has been changed from the original.
Just, just two quick comments. One is what I'm hearing from everybody right here is by, by giving this person in person committee, we have more accountability with that person doing. The second thing is we're, we're sitting there talking about money for this job. The, the beach budget blows every other budget for every other department, I would think. We're talking about bringing in somebody to give us a better idea of all of the money that was spent. Seems like a no brainer to me.
But I guess my question is, should we, should we as a board give direction to staff to call that line item out? There is no salary line item in the beach budget.
It'll come out of, yeah, it, it should come out of thirty, I suppose.
I, I don't disagree with you.
I'm putting it in there now.
Should we just identify?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you talk towards.
No, what I was saying is, right, first thing is, everybody's talking about accountability. Having this position filled means we can look to one person to, why are we doing this? You know, we sit down in a meeting like this, we get a report about everything that we're doing. The second thing is, we spend more money in this area than any other area of this thing and not to have, worried about having a salary or something associated with the largest budget item that we have going forward by magnitude of whatever, ten? You know, in terms of, seems like a no brainer to me. I mean, you wouldn't manage your own business like that.
I'm going to ask Caitlin at this stage, how much were we paid Fran for his services?
A lot.
Because that's going to be.
A good amount of money. I don't know offhand that.
What we need to find out is, is there a better solution to getting a result that we want? That we're not getting from Fran.
I'm happy to pull that for you real quick.
But does the board agree that it would make sense to call that line item out? I would like to add a line item in the beach fund for salaries if that's where this person will be paid from. So we, so it's visible.
Then I think we're, we're going to have to not only, of course, fringe benefits are going to be about thirty percent salary. But we can't just have a position without support. This person's going to need a line item for equipment. Well, or equipment, or i.e. technical services like computer access and GIS programs.
However, it needs to be identified by staff. I'm just saying it should be called out.
It's going to cost more than just salary.
I understand.
Mike, I have a question for you. Since you're where the principal author is. Based on our previous discussion before the mayor got here this morning, would you think we'd be better off adjusting this where it doesn't really encompass all three towns on Topsail Island? But adjusting it back to where it encompasses only and, and addresses only the employment of this individual in the town of North Topsail Beach? Well, I, I'm going to bet you the lawyer's going to win at that point. And I think the lawyer next to me already said this.
I agree.
And, and, you know, because, and, and here's where I'm going. Distinguishing features of this class, paragraph two of this, of this document, employee in this class performs technical administrative professional work to develop a managed beach management program for the shoreline of North Topsail Beach and Topsail Island. I can see North Topsail Beach, period. If we wanted to, if we wanted to expand it out later based upon interest through Shoreline Protection Commission, your discussions with Steve Smith or whatever, but I think, I think we need to focus on North Topsail Beach as we proceed forward here. Especially when we start talking about things like GIS and probably a four-wheel drive vehicle, uh, and other things like that, um, you know.
We have a Hummer.
Yeah, yeah. A Hummer with the, with, with the hood that the hinges, uh, the hinges are rusted, rusted upwards. Um, he looked good in that. But, uh, remember that Mike's going here.
I do, but I don't, I, I believe that, to be honest, I think if we have seventy percent of this person's time, it will be more than enough man hours per year to accomplish the task that we need this person to do for our town. And the advantages of kind of splitting his salary, her salary with the other towns is just the economic thing. It's going to cost us less of the salary. So I, I believe that we need to keep the position description wide enough that that can happen. It doesn't have to happen, but it can happen.
One is you already have a catch-all in there. It says, and other duties as assigned.
Right.
So since you got a catch-all in there, you can do whatever you want. I would suggest we stick with him and it be our employee, right? You've got to catch-all in there already. And the thing is, if it's right, and we only need them seventy percent of the time, then we can know the time out for the other people. Instead of making it so that they report to him and to the board, okay? Because we also, and again, we're back to what the town attorney's comment about the conflict he has in representing the two towns. You know, and you're talking about some hard negotiations in terms of how we fund that other project. Oh, we want them, you know, we want them on our, we don't want them split seventy, thirty in terms of loyalty, right? You want that person out there saying.
My, my thought too is if we were, anytime I'll be, if we were to hire somebody, they're going to be hired into North Topsail Beach while the rest of this takes, if you haven't seen this yet, so you will see that everything takes forever.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so if we hire them in to Topsail Beach, if we decide that they've got time and, and Topsail Beach wants to pay for thirty percent of the time, we're going to need some type of agreement typed up with Topsail Beach. So they're committing to this and we're committing to this and it'll all work out. At that point in time, the job description could be updated or amended because it does have that, that's all, carry all praise in it. So I wouldn't say to toss this job description. I would save this as the expanded version, but for the time being, for what we're actually interviewing and hiring for, I would limit it to North Topsail Beach.
Well, see, and that's how we handle it with Topsail Shoreline Protection Commission and the lobbies. Sir City pays the entire bill. And then they send each of the other two towns their share of the bill. And we are reimbursing. So we'd be paying a hundred percent of the salary and the benefits. And then we would be sending a invoice to whatever towns wanted to participate for the amount of time that they wanted this person to do.
Which, which raises something I, and I, and I have an opinion about this one way or the other, but want to just throw it out for purposes of the, of the discussion. Is this a full-time job? Is this two thousand and eighty hours of billable time a year? Or is it not? Is, is, you know, and, and again, I, I'm not sure either, which is why I'm asking the question. You know, is, is this a full-time job or is this, you know?
So look at the, look at, look at how much progress we've been able to make on projects that are not immediately in front of us. So we haven't made much progress. I mean, the groin is still with the core and I, that's not a knock on the core, but we haven't had a lot of time to be really following up all that much to try and really push to see how to get it to the, what is the next level? How much is that going to cost? Where are we going with this? How are we financing that? How are we paying for, there's, what are we doing with the Cobra zones? I mean, do we, there are some special areas in that whole Cobra zone, um, that have severe erosion, you know? So I think, and I'm not saying it is, or yeah, I don't know if it is, but I'm saying that there's a lot of items that we as a board and a staff aren't able to get to unless they're immediate. And we've been doing more putting fires out than being able to effectively plan in that area.
And I'm not, I'm not, again, you know, to reinforce, I, I don't have an opinion about it one way or another being, being a full-time position. But I just want us to consider as we proceed through this discussion and we come up with developing, developing what we're going to have this person doing, to keep in mind whether or not it's a full-time position.
I think if we can get that chart, um, the chart that India, I think, actually had worked on that showed like one, phase one through five, we haven't really been visually looking at that. I think that would be a great help because it outlines all the different various beach projects and the stages of them. I think that that is something that should be in our regular monthly board packet. So when we're having the beach conversations, it's, it's there.
Two comments. One is, we believe this is going to reduce our outside insulting expenses. Okay, so full-time, whatever. The second thing is, put them on a four-wheel and let them write tickets for the five hundred dollars for the, for the dunes and they'll pay their damn salary just by driving up and down the beach and giving out tickets. I mean, it's like if it's a floor, if, if that person's looking out for the shoreline, even people off the dunes will pay for it themselves. And I know that's somewhat facetious, but it's, you know.
Because, you know.
I think you'll find something for them to do if you've got.
He can at least explain why it's firm on the dunes.
Exactly.
Yeah, what is shoreline protection? Well, part of shoreline protection is protecting the shoreline. Staying off the dunes is not marketing where you should.
If I can hike in on the, uh, job description issue, I would prefer to go, um, I don't want the staff to know how ruthless and cheap I am. If we give him the job description in specific, North Topsail, and then a year down the road, I want him to, uh, provide guidance to the Shoreline Protection Commission at Topsail Beach, uh, the first question the employee is going to ask. First question the employee is going to ask me is, well, what's in it for me? Now, I want a raise to take on additional duty. Since I'm guessing that I would be the one making the offer for the job, I would prefer him to understand, him or her to understand that this is the job. This is what we envisioned, but for the next year or the next two years, I want you focused a hundred percent on the, on Topsail.
Yeah, that's fine.
And of course, the other thing with the full-time duties is that we're not hiring somebody in perpetuity. Or if in fact we hire him and he's spending half his day working in the other half at the bowling alley, I'm going to fire him. We always have the option to say this isn't working out. We're going to go back to the beach committee or we can do something else, but.
Having been in your position in a number of companies, my response to somebody asking for more money is, I've decided not to cut your shot salary because you're not working full-time anymore, so we can go the other way. Yeah, I should, I think, look, you'll find something for them to do. And I think the shoreline protection person is a big enough job. If it's a problem I've got with considering it part-time, what are you going to hire part-time? Well, that's true, you know, and that's, that's a real problem out there. I'm going to hire somebody with those, with the qualifications that, that Mr. Benson put in there. With it, you know, with an engineering degree or something like that, I'm going to find somebody who wants to do their career on the part-time job.
And I think that, I think what you're asking for, Mr. Gilbar, is you see, I think that there could be a statement at the bottom that says, you know, North Topsail Beach envisions this position of migrating into someone who's also of, a member of this or this or this. So I think if we have a general statement at the bottom, it's already in there. We're really talking, I'm, I'm envisioning them in North Topsail Beaches while they're ramping up. Really, they're going to learn what our issue, I wonder if they'll learn what our issues are.
Yeah, just one final comment on that, but isn't the way that the, Mr. Benson, that was just better than me. Anybody looking at our stuff has to consider the island, the island, right? Or I can't just say, I've stopped, you know, where the, where the boundary is, you know, with Surf City and I'm not, you've got to consider everything, right? You've got to consider beaches, roads, you've got to consider everything. So they're going to, by definition, they're going to have to look at the island anyway, right? And you're right, and by definition, this guy or gal is going to be going, even if they only sit in the front row, they're going to be attending this, the Shoreline Protection Commission meetings every month, which, which to Mike Benson and Steve Smith's credit, has really expanded from where it was eight years ago when I started going to it into something that's, it, it really was all about the Surf City project back then because the chairman was a Surf City council. And, and frankly, in those days, when the meetings were down in, at the south end of the island, it wasn't worth the drive it took to get down there and get back to go to the meetings. And you guys have really taken that, that organization to the next level. But, but he's going to get, he or she is going to get a flavor for the big picture there and how everything fits together, or at least is envisioned by those who are elected officials from three towns, on how it's supposed to fit together. Yeah, I think other duties as assigned is always a great clause in a, in job description. Because it gives us a flexibility and other duties as assigned may include coordination with other, you know, the other two island towns.
I'll go back to what the mayor suggested, I think it's a good, good suggestion, put a line item.
Put something generic in so that we have the right perspective. So what is, what is the action on this item then? What are we directing staff to do on this item?
I think first of all, we need to ask human resources if what the, to accept the job, you know, originally, they, this is the job description you want to add.
Well, I think we wanted to remove the Topsail Island part, make it, make the description itself more
Downstairs.
amendable, more amendable to North Topsail Beach, but have a generic statement at the bottom about how it may expand into Topsail Island. I think, Mr. Gilbar, that was what you were looking for, correct?
So give him that direction.
Yeah, I would like staff to just look through that if that's all right.
So the direction is in for, for the manager and staff to take, take this and, and basically turn, turn it into a final draft.
That you're comfortable with because they'd be reporting to you? And then also to adjust, adjust the budget to show a salary for this person under shoreline, under fund priorities.
And because of.
Unless Caitlin, I'm sorry, Tom, but unless you have different direction on how we best show that or where to show it, I just want to make sure it's called out somewhere because it's a new position. Yes, I can go.
As part of the review and the upgrade, I would recommend that the attorney get his, get his eyes on it too. And just to make sure, particularly since it does, at least now it deals with our adjacent towns. And, you know, given the fact that he's also the attorney for the adjacent town, just make sure that this thing does what we want it to do and it's nice and legal.
So rework the budget, rework the job description and then also pass through to the attorney.
Sounds like a great motion to me and I'll make it.
All in favor of the discussion?
Discussion.
Well, I don't know if we need a motion on, on what we just said.
Not to his direction, his staff.
His direction is said, but what I do want to follow up with, the final step is, we direct staff to advertise this position once the job description.
Well, I think when the job description comes back to us, unless you're trying to move it forward more quickly, which is what I think you're trying to do. You know, we, we need, we need to see this and the attorney needs to see it before we send it out to advertise, I think. That's, that's my.
Just a, maybe a, just a question and process. Let's just assume that Dave can get this out to us by the end of the week. He circulates it. If, if we all just say it, it looks fine. And can we just move, I mean, the other thing, you have to present that a lot, right? But if it comes back and, and we just look at, do we actually have to have motions and stuff for him to hire people like that? Or is it just a direction that, you know? And then the other thing, you're going, I'm already going, you already know what I'm going to ask you is, what's the offset of this on consulting fees? Like you, you're, I know you just looked up how much we're paying, so. It's not going to offset the, the coastal engineer at all.
It might.
Well. Uh, there's some things in here that.
It's, it's a, it's a niv at this point. My only, my only, I was just trying to figure out what those expenses were.
Well, let's, let's do two things. So Caitlin, what, what have we paid up so far in engineering? Currently just shot ninety thousand dollars for this fiscal year. Okay.
Let me remind the board that is for Hurricane Matthew Warrens.
Dorian.
And Dorian and it's all FEMA reimbursable expenses. We don't have a contract coastal engineer, not pay the coastal engineer anything other than what we're reimbursable through the dollars forty for the GIS.
And this to me would take place, take the place of much of what we've discussed having a coastal engineer do.
Yeah.
Or at least get, get invited to that.
That's the whole point.
Yeah, he gets invited to that and then he says, if I need, I need a coastal engineer, you know, it's a different story, but.
But what Mike's talking about, reimbursement versus expense. That's right. And, and we're making, this, this, this protection person is going to develop our, our shoreline management plan. So we need a coastal engineer to do a project, you know, hire a coastal engineer.
That was one of the original conditions on this for coastal engineer.
So I'm just going to bring it back to the question that we had directed to our part. So the process, if, if the job description is updated and staff is very pleased with it and the attorney has signed off on it, if it's sent around to the board for review, are we able to respond with a yea or nay there or does it have to come to the next meeting? Well, I think you're talking, you're not, if you're talking about doing it this fiscal year, it's going to be a budget amendment. I just want to go back to the board. Just looking at where, where's the funding coming? If you're rolling into the budget that you're already prepared, you're already preparing. If you prove that at the end of the month and that line item is reflected, it's approved.
We're not going to hire him this month. It's the, it's the.
That's effectively a, a same power. So if we, so if we approve the budget, if that line item's in, I'm just, I'm just, line item's in there, we approve the budget, then what we've done is given our town manager the authority to be able to do his job and hire appropriate appointment.
And if he chooses to advertise it before the end of the month, to start next year, that's, that's called.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. All right, and the next item is pursuing hard infrastructure, mending general statute one one three A, G S one one five, got one H to exclude and to be a new section of these forms.
Well, yeah, that's under this category. We discussed this several times in the past. And if you look at the agenda that we have from the meeting last Tuesday, there was an idea in there that we should look at asking our legislative representatives to separate and allow us to use the shallot draft fund, which backfill a hard instruction. This is background, there's three hundred thousand cubic yards of sand that has to accompany the groin, physical groin. Okay, that would cost about, gosh, oh, over three hundred thousand dollars, okay? And if we could get the shallot draft fund to cover seventy-five percent of that, beats the total cost of the, of the structure.
I read the.
What's the shallot?
The point here is, and, and you've seen the legislation in the packet last week about it, it says no state financing can be used. It says no local financing can be used. It says no local obligation, obligation, bonds can be used to build the groin. So.
I thought we were having a separate, a separate project for the backfill and that's why, how we.
That's what I would like to be able to do. But I think that the way the statutes are written is a companion part of groin. If, if, if we can look at the statutes and say, it clearly separates the backfill from the, from the structure, fine. But I'm not sure that's the case yet. So that's what we need to, I guess, to the town attorney get.
That's what I'm.
Yeah, either the town attorney or maybe somebody from the beach or coastal. Or maybe they have the EQ as their own civil lawyers, maybe somebody.
I think it would be easier to go that route, to try and just make sure we have the option of having the backfill for the groin be a separate project, so it's not tied up into this statute than it would be to try and get approval to remove us from it. So my suggestion to the board would be, let's, let's talk with the town attorney and let's see if this is something he can help us with or if we need to contact.
That's where it goes. The glaze requirement is not touched the, the, the.
That might even take longer than, to get a groin. Okay.
Um, let's see.
Then we have capital improvements.
Okay, Cap, under capital improvements, I just wanted to side him in here because I have been a part of the capital improvement discussions the last two years with town manager, with engineers that have been involved. And we were talking about, you know, taking responsibilities as board members for these different strategic areas that we have. And I just wanted to make sure that the board was geared with my desire to continue working with capital groups. So I'm volunteering to work with capital groups to figure out the fire station, to figure out the police station, to figure out now renovation, town hall, sounds like we've got big issues there, otherwise. So I would like to be the champion for capital groups.
Listen.
If you would like any help on that, particularly with, with respect to the fire station and that kind of stuff, just let me know. I mean, you're much more up to date than I am on any of this stuff. I just, after having looked at that, it's, it's.
I would welcome, I would welcome your participation.
Maybe I can help you.
It's very common for us to have two older men assigned to a project. So if you would like to be on there as well.
Wait a second, he's, he's going to be able to get me up to date and I don't have to wear out the police and fire. I will call the question.
Well, no, no, that's, I think it would be nice if you two partnered up on that.
You mind it?
I don't.
Great.
Okay. All right, the next, is there anything, I don't know if you guys approved any additional items to be on the agenda for our document? So then is, make a motion to, do you want to make a motion to a friend?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Ouch.
We're out.
This is pretty good.
Thank you very much for coming. Sure, yes, I'm sure you're going to probably enjoy it.
Yes.
Discord.
I have.
But we could, yeah, we're all flying now. Well, I'm sure that she wants to.
Yeah.
Maybe we can ask.
I know it's bad, Deb, but don't jump. Josh lined up.
Almost.